Second, all in favor of returning to the open session, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Mr. Coleman?
Mr. Chairman, whereas the Powhatan County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be resolved that the Powhatan County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and only public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda for the workshop is adjourned. Is there a motion to adjourn our workshop?
So moved.
Motion is there a second?
A second.
Motion is second. All in favor of adjourning our workshop, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. We are adjourned from our workshop. All right, good evening, folks. So we're wrapping up our workshop and we're going to be moving into our meeting that should have began at 7:00 PM. We're running a bit late, I apologize for that. As soon as we can switch our computers over to the seven o'clock meeting, we'll get started and we'll move through our agenda. So, thank you for being here this evening. All right, so I'll call to order this 7:00 PM meeting of the Powhatan County School Board on March 10th, 2020. Madam Clerk, if you'd let the minutes reflect that all members of the school board are present this evening. We are joined by Dr. Jones and by our student liaison. We'll begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance. I'd ask Mrs. Ayers if she would lead us in the pledge of allegiance and the invocation. I ask Mrs. Smith if she'd lead us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the great government for which it stands, for our nation, our God, and for visible, the liberation to us from all.
Let's pray. Father, we want to thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Forgive us of our shortcomings and, but help us as we go through this meeting tonight to make the best choices that you would have us to make for the people that live in this county and for the students. We ask your guidance in all these things. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mrs. Ayers, Mrs. Smith. All right, in front of us, we have a draft agenda for the evening. Do any members have changes necessary to the draft agenda as presented?
Make a motion, we accept the agenda?
Have a motion to accept the draft agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor of approving the draft agenda as presented, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next item on the agenda is the approval of our minutes. So, we will be talking about reviewing the minutes for our February 2000, February 11th, 2020 board meeting. Any changes necessary to the minutes as presented? Corrections or revisions? I'm sorry. I apologize. The February 11th and February 25th meetings. Any changes, revisions necessary to the minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from February 11th and both meetings and February 25th.
All right, we have a motion to accept the minutes. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next item on the agenda is a review of the bills and receipts presented for the board this month. Is there any discussion regarding the bills and receipts presented for review? All right, hearing done. That takes us to our public hearing. Dr. Jones, do you want to begin this discussion?
Sure. Each year, we're required by law to have a public hearing on our fiscal year budget. That public hearing is going to be conducted now, so we would invite people to come to the podium. I'm going to start off this by giving a brief presentation on the budget so that everybody in the room and everybody listening can know the details of our budget, and then we will hear from any persons or delegations who wish to address the board and give comments on the budget as part of this process. So, on the presentation of our budget, when we begin our budget, one thing that we like to do every year is to talk about how we meet our goals because our budget helps fund any initiatives or programs that we're working on. Next slide, please. And so, we have four goals in our strategic plan. I won't go through all of this for you, but the first goal is personalized learning. We have several indicators there of ways that we have met that goal or reaching that goal. Number two is leveraging talent, acquiring and maintaining a talented staff and individuals that work with our students. There are several indicators there as well. If we move on to goal three, which is investing in the community, this is something that we heard loud and clear from the community when we formed this strategic plan about ways to get the community more involved in our schools, as well as get our students out in the community more. And you can see each of the bulleted lists there of all the things that we're doing, including advisory councils to the school board, some of our charities and nonprofits in Powhatan that we're involved with, our Parent Resource Center, which is a wonderful resource for our parents and others. And then, goal four is about culture and well-being. Well-being for our students, well-being for our staff. This has been an area of intense focus this year as we rolled out our social emotional learning program at the elementary level and at the middle level, work that our students have done, both at the middle school and high school through our diverse hands at work, group at the high school, and multicultural student association at the middle school, as well as our equity and diversity committees, all fall within this goal of increasing well-being of our students and our staff. The next slide talks a little bit about some historical staffing levels. We always start by looking at our staff, how we're using our staff, how we're best utilizing them to meet our students' needs. This kind of gives a historical perspective from the 2013, 2014 year all the way through 1920, and then juxtaposes it by our student enrollment. You can see our staffing has stayed relatively flat. We've seen an increase, I mean, a decrease overall in total staff. That's thrown off a little bit because we did outsource food service, but in general, you can see that our teaching numbers have stayed relatively stable. We have added some more paraprofessionals to meet the needs of individual students who have more one-to-one needs. The next slide talks about enrollment. Certainly, that is a major driver of our budget as we look at how many students we have. You can see that since 2014, or 2013, 2014, our enrollment has been relatively flat. We haven't seen a large increase or decrease. We saw the large decrease in the years before, 2013, as a result of the Great Recession where most school divisions in Virginia saw a decrease in their numbers. But otherwise, we've stayed between 4257 and 4282. This year, we are projected to see an increase next year of about 48 students to 23, or 20, excuse me, 4330. When you combine staff and students, one thing we like to look at is what is our average class size. It's been a stated goal of the school board for a number of years since I've been here for the last seven years to keep class sizes low so that we can have quality teacher and student interaction. And you can see over the last two years, those numbers, while they fluctuate in some individual areas, their overall numbers stay relatively the same, and we monitor these not just on a yearly basis, but several times throughout the year and make adjustments as needed if we see spikes in enrollment in individual classrooms or programs. We also like to look and see how we're doing in terms of our neighbors and our peers throughout the state in terms of what it costs to educate students in Powhatan. We like to be good stewards of the taxpayer dollars, and you can see that we are well below the state average when it comes to comparison of per pupil costs. Where the last number, or last year that we have numbers for, is 2018, and we have $11,032 per student to educate a Powhatan student. State average is just over $12,500. We also, and we know this is a large state with lots of different regions, so we also take a look at how we do compared to our neighbors. So, that's the little chart on the right-hand side of the slide. You can see us compared to three of our neighbors, Goochlin, Cumberland, which we are, which have considerably more per student funding, and Amelia, which is less than us. School board has also stated as a goal from the last several years, employee compensation. This chart just shows a salary study that we had done every year. We started doing every other year of comparing Powhatan staff to 12 of our neighboring counties in the region and how we do by category. Our goal is to be at the median, or the school board stated goal is to be at the median, so about halfway in the average, and that's because we have some districts like Hanover, Henrico, Richmond that have maybe more resources and do pay more, and then we've got some others in, on the other end of the spectrum. You can see that we're doing fairly well overall with teachers and bus drivers and many of the other categories. We are not doing quite as well in terms of reaching our goal of getting to the median. I also put this information here, almost all of the comparison school divisions are recommending at least a 2% raise for this next year's This talks about our partnership with Powhatan County in terms of how we work with the county. There's some savings here that we were able to save the county and the taxpayers of the county through some CIP projects. We just completed Powhatan Middle School and the joint garage, joint bus garage in the last two years. Both projects came in under budget, and almost $500,000 was returned to the county as a result of that. We also have a CIP reserve fund that was established in 2015 in which any unused dollars at the end of the year go into that fund and go to pay for projects in the school division. We've currently have, or cumulatively have, $1.7 million have been accumulated in that fund. We were able to fund some projects without going and borrowing money, such as the unexpected chiller outage at Powhatan High School a few years ago, the joint transportation facility, and also a energy performance contract with Train that we are in the process of finishing up that will end up saving us money in the long run, which I'll get to in a minute. We also have worked to reduce our CIP, for those who don't know, is Capital Improvement Plan that talks about buildings, large-scale equipment, those types of things. We're not able to meet all of our needs through the CIP funding mechanism, which usually requires borrowing money. So, we took a look at how we could do that without borrowing money, and we were able to save not, over $9 million in projects through two different alternative funding sources that we looked at. The one was Sun Tribe, putting solar on four of our buildings. That project is wrapping up now. We were able to replace a section of the roof at Powhatan Elementary as a result of that project without spending any money. We wove it into the savings that we'll see through the solar project and the solar savings and energy costs that we'll realize. And then, the big project was energy performance contracting with Train. This happened in all of our facilities, new lighting, new water, new mechanical systems that are more efficient and will save us money in the long run. We were able to put in major mechanical upgrades at Pocahontas and Powhatan Elementary Schools as a result of this contract, and ended up being able to take those projects then off the CIP list. Last thing in terms of our partnership with Powhatan County was when we closed this building as a school system, there were some operating costs that were reduced, $650,000, and we returned that money to the county as a result of that effort over fiscal year 17 through One thing that I think also public needs to be aware of is that we've seen a large reduction in state funding over the years, ever since the Great Recession, and you can see there that our variance in per pupil aid since 2009, each year of the last three years is over $1.3 million. This coming year is the best year that we have because of an increase in funding at the state level, but the year before, it was almost $1.8 million and even higher than that in FY19. That's less funding that we're getting from the state, more of a burden that's placed on the locality to fund our children's education. We've also had some mandated budget increases as a result of this, VRS, which is the retirement system, salaries and group health insurance. Since FY12, that's been an $8 million increase in our budget just through those three categories. And then, the last thing before we get into this year's budget is the composite index impact. The state funding formula is pretty complex, but what you can tell, what I can tell you to simplify it is that the composite index measures how much money we get from the state, and our composite index keeps going up. As you can see, from 2015 to 2022, it's gone up significantly. Those red numbers are funding, less funding that we receive from the state as a result of the composite index going up. The composite index is a measure of the locality's ability to fund the education of its students. What this number is saying is that over the last six years, Powhatan County through its tax, real estate tax holdings, has a higher ability to pay for public education in Powhatan. Therefore, the state contributes less because the county can pay more, is the easiest way to remember that, what the impact of the composite index. So, given that backdrop, what the school board is priorities and what I'm recommending is a 2% increase for all employees to remain competitive. There are funds in the state budget for this pay raise that was just approved this weekend. All of our peer divisions are doing 2% or more, and we've also are going to be talking a little bit about a healthcare increase, so this would help offset that healthcare increase. We are recommending, I'm recommending, a 3% increase for bus drivers. Our bus drivers do an amazing job on a daily basis. Just yesterday, with the unexpected closing, Pocahontas Elementary School bus drivers showed up, made sure every child got home safely in an unannounced and unforeseen circumstance, and they do that on a daily basis. We've seen a lot of increased demand for bus drivers. A lot of our neighboring counties and school divisions can't find enough bus drivers, so this 3% increase would be a reward for our bus drivers for the great work they do and would also allow us to remain competitive. The next one is healthcare costs. This board has been working for the last three years to try to bring our premiums in line with what the county has, offers their employees. We're on the same healthcare plan, but over the last 10 to 12 years, the county has been able to contribute more to lower their employees' healthcare costs. So, this board has asked us to come forward and try and to remediate that difference that has occurred. We've seen some employees, just last summer, three potential employees changed their minds about accepting jobs in Powhatan due to our healthcare rates for families, and we looked at how we fell as a result of that with our peers in terms of family healthcare rates and found that we didn't do very well. So, I'm recommending that we put more money into healthcare costs to lower the cost for our families, plan specifically as the area that we have seen the greatest disparity in, as well as the high deductible plan for families also. In terms of staffing, not a lot of changes in staffing, and most of those are mandated. The General Assembly passed a law to increase the number of school counselors working with our students, which is certainly a step in the right direction. So, this is a state-mandated position based on that law. We also have a 1.0 FTE for a special education teacher that we need because of student caseloads and student needs. We've added a library assistant position. That's an instructional assistant position because of a new resource schedule that we're going to be doing at at least one of our elementary schools, and then a behavior intervention assistant at Powhatan Middle School. We've seen some increase in student needs at Powhatan Middle School, and this would be an additional staff member to assist working with students who have severe behavior needs at the middle school. Last slide just shows that we are currently in a balanced budget situation. I will caution that this is estimated. We haven't gotten final numbers from the state yet, but we know what the Senate version of the budget was, what the House version of the budget was. There was only $30,000 difference between the two when it came to funding for Powhatan. So, we have the state increase there in revenue. The county has indicated that we would be receiving an additional $904,000, at least that's what the acting county administrator is recommending, and then we get a few extra dollars from federal and local sources. So, we have an increase of 1.8, 1.8 million, $48,518. Those expenditure changes are on the other side. We have a mandated 1% increase in Virginia retirement system, the healthcare that we just spoke about, the positions and stipends add up to $166,000, and then the raise for employees, and then we have some line item requests. These are requests for materials and supplies from schools, as well as individual departments to meet their department's needs. And that is so, some of our budget in a nutshell, and at this point, I'll turn it back over to the chairman, see if there are any speakers who want to address the board.
All right, thank you, Dr. Jones. So, this evening, this is our public hearing on the 2020, 2021 budget. This is an opportunity for you, those of you in attendance, parents, friends, family, grandparents, an opportunity to address the school board and share with us your thoughts about what you have just heard, the recommended budget from Dr. Jones presented to the school board. So, this is an opportunity again to address, and this is our public hearing, it's an opportunity to address the budget proposed. There's a time limit hearing of delegations and individuals. The time limit for delegations and individuals is three minutes per individual and five minutes per group, and we have 30 minutes of total time regarding the public hearing. Public hearing period is open. Speakers can come forward.
I am Patty Trzynowski, and I just want to take the time to thank Dr. Jones and all, everyone that has worked on the items that they have for the goals for Powhatan County. The school board has created an environment for both students in terms of addressing needs that we need to have, and also staffing, and I am very grateful that we are focusing on those areas that need to be addressed. I had an opportunity to work with Senator Donovan when she asked certain teachers to come in to talk about different areas that we should address, and one of the things I want to say this evening is, I was able to report to Senator Donovan incredible things that we are doing here in Powhatan County, and even had discussion with her because she wanted follow-up discussions based on the fact that we were already using behavioralists in our schools, addressing needs of students. So, I just want to take the time this evening to say, looking at that budget and where we are headed, I'm very grateful to the board and also the work that Dr. Jones has done over the years, that I was a teacher in Powhatan and now just a parent. So, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. All right, once again, our public hearing is open. Speakers are welcome to come forward. One final call for the speakers for our public hearing. All right, thank you very much. So, at this point, I'll bring the public hearing to a close. Now, we move into our public comment period. So, this is an opportunity for speakers again. In accordance with school board policies BDDH and KD, any resident of Powhatan County may address the board during public comment. At this time, citizens are invited to address the board. When it is your turn to speak, please come to the podium and wait to be recognized by the chair. Each individual will have three minutes. Delegations will have five minutes to provide their comments. Please respect this time limitation so others may address the board. A maximum of 30 minutes will be designated for public comment this evening. Please address your comments to the board as a whole, not to individual board members, the audience, or staff, and please begin by stating your name. The board requests that all speakers maintain an environment that promotes listening and respect. The board will not respond or address issues raised by speakers during the course of public comment, and speakers are reminded that the board chair is authorized to stop or remove any speaker who uses vulgar, disruptive, or threatening language. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines is greatly appreciated. Public comment period is open. Once again, public comment period is open. All right, seeing no movement, I'll bring public comment period to a close. Dr. Jones, I believe we have several recognitions this evening.
We do. We have some very patient people in the audience that have been waiting to see some recognition, so we're going to go, I might ask the board to join me on the floor. As we do that, we ask everybody in attendance, I know that, as I said, you've been very patient, please stay through the recognition portion at least so everybody gets recognized and we can hear everybody be recognized. After the recognitions are done, if you'd like to leave at that time, you're certainly welcome to, but just for common courtesy, if you would just please stay in your seat until everybody's recognized, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Jones, members of the board, students, staff, and parents. This evening, to be respectful of possible health concerns and model best practices, we are going to use an alternate to handshaking during our recognitions, and we will be using an elbow tap, so please help us with complying with that this evening. Our first recognition this evening is our spelling bee winners, and Powhatan County Public Schools held our 2020 Division-Wide Spelling Bee on Friday, February 7th. The following students completed in the spelling bee. I'm going to ask them all to come forward to be recognized, and then we'll recognize our winners and runner-up. Grade four, Flat Rock Elementary, Maya Hoy. Grade five, Flat Rock Elementary, Aubrey Carroll. Grade four, Pocahontas Elementary, Dakota Dunn. Grade five, Pocahontas Elementary, Austin Mica. Grade four, Powhatan Elementary, Savannah Atkinson. Grade five, Powhatan Elementary, Shagendip Core. Grade six, Powhatan Middle School, River Brasswell. Grade seven, Powhatan Middle School, Avery Payne. Grade eight, Powhatan Middle School, Olivia Goodrich. Grade eight, Powhatan Middle School, A.J. Casco. And our runner-up was our fifth grade level winner and Division-Wide runner-up with Shagendip Core from Powhatan Elementary, and our winner, Olivia Goodrich, Powhatan Middle School, eighth We'd like to recognize our Lexus of Richmond Leadership Award finalist, Jean Volkovich. Jean is not here this evening. She says, "Thank you so much for the invitation to the school board meeting in recognition of her nomination for the Lexus of Richmond Scholar-Athlete Award. She appreciates the invitation, and she wouldn't have achieved any of the things that made her eligible for the award without the amazing staff at PCPS." She is out of town, but I'd like to recognize her. She has an impressive resume and is in the running for a $25,000 scholarship. She's been a five-year member of the PHS soccer team, a member of National Honor Society and the National Computer Society. She's been the AP Environmental Science Student of the Year, the AP Psychology Student of the Year, Algebra II Honors Outstanding Student, William &amp; Mary Leadership Award winner, Junior Marshall, Junior and Senior Class Officer, co-founder of the PHS Plan- winner, Junior Marshall, junior and senior class officer, co-founder of the PHS Planeteers, a delegate at Girl State, Chair of the Environmental Youth Council of Virginia, Captain of the Virginia State Olympic Development Program, a Virginia State ODP player both in '17 and '18, and a member of FC Richmond Mystics. She will be eligible for this award at the end of the year, and she's the Week 10 nominee. So congratulations to Jean. It is Music in Our Schools Month, so we'd like to do a few recognitions of our outstanding musicians. I'm going to ask Mr. Nicholas Sneed, Mr. Andrew Sneed and Mr. Neil Landini to come forward to help with some of our recognitions. We do have a lengthy list, so I'll ask if you'll hold your applause for our group until the end for this one. This year, Powhatan High School had the largest group of students who auditioned and were selected into District Three All-District Band with a record 28 students. District Three is comprised of students and counties from, stretching from Chesterfield down to South Hill. Over 1,000 students auditioned, and both Powhatan Middle School and Powhatan High School had some of the largest numbers per school that were selected. To be selected, students prepared an A2 day, A2 day, thank you, A2, A2. Major scales and had to sight read. Students from Powhatan High School were, if you'll come forward as I call your names, Jack Bell, Trevor Branch, Jordan Carey, Jake Crockett, Alexis Elsie, Nash Gober, Ashton Engel, Brandon King, Gabe Colzer, Olivia Mack, Adelaide Mead, Sadie Mead, Carter Makita, Ryan Moss, Jeremy Payden, Lily Peck, Todd Sparks, Cameron St. John, Davis Tester, Tucker Thomas, Isabel Torrios, Brianna Tribble, Brian Wilson, Leanna Wilson, Peter Wood and Shay Rice. Congratulations, everybody. Did I miss Jackson? And Jackson Tester. Is there a cord? We also have some middle school band and orchestra recognitions. The Virginia Music Educators Association, Virginia Band and Orchestra Directors Association, and the Virginia Choral Directors Association offers honors ensembles to feature the most outstanding students, musicians throughout the Commonwealth. Membership is earned through a rigorous audition process, which includes performance of memorized scales, prepared selection and sight reading, an excerpt in 30 seconds. Students rehearse with peers from across the district under the direction of guest conductor to present a concert on a Saturday afternoon. For the first time ever, Powhatan was represented in the Central Regional Junior Orchestra by an eighth grader bassist, Evan Garland. Evan also earned top 10 in the Division in All-District Band. We'd also like to recognize those who participated, Austin Dodd, Evan Garland, Mason Hughes, River Lanes, Annabelle Mack, Olivia Moss, Katie O'Neil, Cole Rakes, Eli Timmons, Ian Timmons, Jaden Watkins. Congratulations. And while they're doing their pictures in their photo ops, just another note, in addition to the student participation in all district band, the entire middle school symphonic band benefited from the weekend as the group participated in a Google Hangout clinic with Dr. Travis Cross, a conductor of the Wind Ensemble and Chair of the Department of Music at UCLA, who got to participate with them. So pretty cool experience for the kids.
Okay, anybody, if you'd like to leave at this point, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Thank you. Thanks again for everybody's patience. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Dr. Jones, would you like to walk us through the consent agenda and discuss, we'll have any discussions by the board?
Sure, happy to do so, Mr. Chairman. First item is March principal reports. We also have a financial report for the month of, ending in February. CIP financial report for the month of February. Two facilities updates, both our usage of facilities and then the work that's been done in our facilities. Overnight field trips are there, and they're both state track meet that's already occurred as well as overnight FFA block and bride horse judging contest that's already occurred as well. Denim to the superintendent's contract, that is some language related to VRS and changes as a result of that. The personnel doc and an agenda that was discussed in closed session during the workshop, and those are the items in the consent agenda.
All right, so do members have questions about any of the items included in the consent agenda? All right, if there are none, we can take these items up in a block if that's the will of the board.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the consent agenda in a block. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved in a block 5-0. Dr. Jones?
Thank you. Next is, in the superintendent's report, 6A is consider approval of use of school buses and school bus drivers. We, I think, have started a tradition now of visits to expose our future kindergarten students to their home schools by several daycares and churches that provide preschool services. So this is a request, we've grouped them together for the four that we've heard from thus far. We may hear from others, but we would like to allow school buses so the students get a full experience, not just of visiting school, but also riding on a school bus.
All right, discussion regarding these items.
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Emel.
I would just like to say, as I do every year, what a wonderful experience we're providing for our new kindergarteners to come and see our schools, what their school, what's going to be their school. I think it's a great idea, and I think we ought to go ahead and prove it again this year.
All right. Other questions or comments? All right, so Mrs. Emel will take that in the form of a motion. Mr. Cole has seconded Mrs. Emel's motion of wholehearted support. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next item, Dr. Jones.
Thank you. The next item is an MOU with South University. This is an MOU to provide some of our students, those studying or wishing to study in occupational therapy assistant, some field work experience. So we provide another work experience for our students. They'd be paired with a certified occupational therapy assistant during the school year to gain knowledge of the position and responsibilities in a school division, would be some nice on-the-job training. So we are asking for approval of this MOU.
All right, does the board have discussion or questions regarding the proposed MOU?
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Emel.
Do we need our attorney to look at the MOU, or is this a standard, like, we have one with Longwood University for our student teachers?
Yes, it mirrors several other MOUs that we have with organizations to provide experiences for our students. So we feel comfortable without legal review for this particular one. Normally, we always err on the side of the caution, but since this mirrors a standard for one of those experiences, we feel okay with it.
Thank you.
All right. Further questions or comments? All right, hearing none, is there a motion?
Make a motion to accept.
Ms. Ayers has made a motion, is there a second?
I second.
Ms. Smith has seconded, Ms. Ayers. Motion, all in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next item, Dr. Jones.
Next item is to consider approval of school calendar revision for the 2019-2020 school year. We started hearing from teachers sometime at the beginning of February that we hadn't had any snow days and it was a long haul, and if there wasn't any snow, could a calendar revision be proposed? So we talked to several of those teachers. The day that kept coming up was the Friday before Memorial Day, which is May 22nd, as well as possibly ending the school year early on Thursday, so that teachers didn't have to return for a workday to clean up on Monday, they could get that done on Friday, June 12th. So we're recommending that at this time. Mr. Cole brought up a good point in the workshop as we were talking about the COVID-19 measures, about the possibility of having school closures, and certainly we can mark those like we do with snow days as possible days, so that if something happened between now and May, we may need to gather those days back for instructional time. We can denote that on the updated calendar if that's the board's wishes, but we do recommend approval of these two days at this time, just to give everybody time to plan and be prepared for it.
And I also heard from constituents, and I appreciate you addressing their concerns and responding to that one email particularly, but I agree with Mr. Cole's earlier comments. I would prefer that whatever action the board takes, we make sure that it's clear that, you know, these two additional days are contingent upon not needing them for any other purpose. All right, we have a motion, is there a second? Ms. Ayers has seconded Mr. Cole's motion. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion is carried 5-0. Dr. Jones?
Thank you. Last item for tonight is to consider approval for food service operations contract renewal, number two. The board saw a presentation from SEDEXO staff during the work session that highlighted some improvements and successes made in that program over this last year. We are required to annually approve this contract and to have board approval, and then we have to send it forward to the Department of Education for the state so that they can review it to make sure that we stay in compliance of state and federal laws. So at this point, we would appreciate approval of this contract.
All right, discussion? Questions?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a comment, just to say that I'm really, they seem to be working very, very hard to accommodate the needs of our students, and I just want to state that I'm very appreciative of that and that I'm happy that hopefully we're going to vote to continue their contract. I think they're making good improvements, and they're working very hard to do that.
All right, other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Emel.
Yes, I think they're a very good example of what contracted business should do when we pay them and what we should expect from them.
All right, other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the contract.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I second it.
Motion is second. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next item on the agenda is Item Seven, which are items for discussion, and we begin with comments from the board. As is our practice, we'll begin with our student liaison.
Okay, so first, the National Honor Society has once again promoted a recent Baptist church, hosting miracles from the spring, which gives adults to special needs an opportunity to get dressed up and have some fun with friends in a safe and comfortable place. The Math Honor Society recently welcomed 35 new members, all of whom are currently enrolled in math, whether it's at the Algebra II level or above. The Powhatan High School band program is a worthy of their superior streak, and the honors wing symphony earned an exceptional score of one from every single judge. Students at the government have recently had the chance to experience the democratic process firsthand while preparing candidates for the annual mock senate debates by creating introduction speeches and campaign commercials. The Science National Honor Society completed their four-week-long after-school science club at Flora Calumet School last Tuesday afternoon, and enjoyed the experience so much that they are planning to do it again next school year. Additionally, the Science National Honor Society will be taking a field trip to Virginia Commonwealth University this Friday, to come to the labs and talk about careers in the science field with leaders in the school's departments of immunology and engineering. And lastly, members of the Science National Society traveled to elementary schools last week to read science books.
Very good. Thank you very much. All right, Mrs. Smith.
All right, well, let's see. I just wanted to reiterate from the workshop my feelings on the upset, how upset I was to hear the tremendous increase in what insurance is going to cost for the county and for our school workers. And I would just like to see us go forward, make an appropriate timeline to request a consulting service. I know we have to give them 90-day notice, so by July 1, we should be, really have thought this over and know where we're headed with that, to even be looking at new healthcare proposals. So we must go looking to provide better for our employees, and that's just, it's a bandwagon I'm not getting off of anytime soon. And the thing of cleaning of the schools is so very important, and it's so very necessary. And I hope that the representative tonight felt our concern and our passion about making improvements in those, in that particular area.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Mrs. Ayers?
Just a couple. I'm going to try my allergies in March are already acting up and that doesn't normally happen until May. So, anyway. This week, Dr. Jones and myself and Rick Cole attended the Southside Regional Forum. And it was a, it's a very good meeting. It gives us an opportunity to talk to colleagues in the field. And we won, Dr. Jones, I'm going to put you on the spot, we did have a, an art winner.
Second place at the middle school level.
Okay, second place at the middle school level, that we were very proud to receive that. And I believe last year, we had
First, first place at the high school.
First place at the high school and that is, that was displayed at the VDOE or at the VSBA offices, I think.
I think it was at VDOE.
Okay, yeah. So, we have a lot to be proud of. Very proud of our, our band. It's just so wonderful to see that many students coming up here for awards. It just, it does my heart good to see that. And with that, I think that I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ayers. Mrs. Emel?
Okay. I, I agree with Mrs. Smith. I, I just going to say one sentence here. We need to hold companies that we do business with accountable. We are in, okay, here goes the second sentence. We, we owe the staff and the community to be using taxpayer money wisely. Okay, now, as far as activities and the fun part of the job, let's see. The art exhibit here, my daughter and I came to it and we were one day late. So, I apologize to all the art teachers, but anyway, we, my daughter and I did stay to see all the exhibits and they are beautiful. We attended the PLI dinner last week at the high school, which was always fun to meet new people, especially in my district, District Five. I attended my first spring sports parent meeting last week and found it very beneficial and feel like I am in the know of what's going on now. Also, last week there, I was invited to the JROTC briefing. And they did a very good job and that was always fun to watch. Let's see, the STEM night, and I'm so sorry, Mrs. Kitten, this, she doesn't come to meetings, but I sure hope that she'll listen and know how much her, her night was very well received. I happened to be doing parent duty in between dance class and picking up from soccer practice and going to get dinner for my son. And so, as we were sitting in the parking lot at the high school, waiting for him to finish, I couldn't help but notice all of these young people just skipping and very excited that they were coming to the big school. And, and that's what I love to see is what, what she and the others provided, the other teachers and students, was showing what they have to look forward to and, and to be going to the big school. And then, of course, inside was just, okay, fabulous. The, well, the pig lungs, that's personal for me. Watching, watching my dad, he died, he suffocated to death. He had COPD. And every chance I get to see, have an opportunity to have that out there, I have to say something. So, I really appreciate, Dr. Jones, you tweeting that out so that we can remind our students that we don't want to be smoking and vaping and we want to lead healthy lives. So, I thank you for that. Last thing there was Waffles Whitlow was in attendance in the small animal care rooms and many other animals. And it just was a very wonderful hands-on experience for everyone that attended. Okay, let's see, two more things. Of course, there was the Dr. Seuss play, the, at Pocahontas Elementary, Hooray for Dif and Doo for Day. And I do have a book, Dr. Jones, that has a story. I know you were wondering about that.
I wasn't familiar with that one.
I know. Well, he has so many, it's hard to keep up.
It is.
You know? But I also learned something this year that Ms. Mindy in the head office there, she takes the book, writes this, and adds to it to write the whole play. Now, as many years as I've seen her do, you know, seen the play, I did not know this. So, it's just always an exciting day to see a whole gym full of elementary students on their knees, excited about reading. And they do door prizes, they ask them comprehension questions and, and they're all, you know, oh, I think it's this, I think it's that. And, and then the big excitement is the, is them saying, oh, well, there's Mrs. So-and-so or there's Mr. So-and-so. And they're, they're trying to see who their teachers are under all of the costumes. So, it's always a, a good, it's a great tradition for students and families. And then at the end, we, they were leaving the cafeteria, the gym and I was holding one of the doors to, for classes to exit. And Dr. Jones came and he, I looked over and he was going to hold the door across. Just trying to set up the, the visual here, okay? So, then I, I, I looked and this little girl's looking at him, you know, she's a first grader, so she's not too tall. And how tall are you, Dr. Jones? Six?
Six-two.
Six-two. And she just looked up at him and I looked over and, and all I could hear was Dr. Jones saying, I, I know it's your job, I know it's your job to do this, but I'm just going to help you out today. But the look on her face
Was unhappy. He only gets to be door holder every so often.
That's right. But it was priceless to see, so, okay. And the last thing, I know they mentioned the Black History Month presentation. And it was also Michael Fallon presented to the high school last month. And then yesterday, the middle school was hosting an assembly with him. And in case you don't know, I just briefly wanted to tell you that he talks about sadness, pain, depression, anxiety. He, he's a black man who does a presentation about the human experience. He talks about children and adult experiences that make them feel depressed and anxious and that they're not alone. He teaches in, in his presentation that our pain is our gift. He helps people get in touch with their stories and start to share, looking at things that we have perceived hundreds of times, but we've never looked at them from another angle. He also mentioned that kids that get the best grades are the most anxious. Again, I just want to say the word sadness, pain, depression, anxiety. It's all about emotional health and I think we need to say these words and keep the conversation going and not be quiet about it. That was four great assemblies and I thank Dr. Prince who found him and the kids just really could relate because he's entertaining as well as getting his message across, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Emel. Mr. Cole?
Yes, just a couple of comments. First thing is, yeah, I do want to compliment the STEM fair. My grandson was a static. It was a big event for him and he, he
Skipped in?
He would be, he would be a better reporter than I could possibly, but he was amazed by it all and I really appreciate the effort it goes into. And we're fast approaching the final stretch here of the school year. I know it's been a long stretch since we got out of Christmas. I appreciate everybody's perseverance over these long weeks until we get to spring break. All of you, your hard work and I hope that you'll persevere over the last six, last nine weeks too. So, good luck in doing that, but I do want to thank you.
Mrs. Nees?
Here tonight. Just, they represent a lot of effort and what they do with the band, but they're the one organization, one group of our students. From elementary to high school, we've got staff members who are well beyond what you'd normally expect. Just put in time, put in effort over and over again with our students. And we can never compensate you for that. All we can do is say thank you. And the dedication of our staff is once again, one of the things that draws people to Palatine County Schools. It makes our schools a special place. I really do appreciate those great things that you guys, that everybody's doing to help our students. I don't want to achieve but feel connected to the school system, so thank you for doing that. The other thing, just two quick things. I do want to ask the board if they want to recognize the ACAC graduates and the names that you guys give. I want to say, having sat through a number of budget years, that I sure appreciate a budget year like we've had this year where it looks like the budget's not a challenge. We've done a good job. Dr. Jones and his staff have done a good job. The school system has done a good job being good stewards of the county taxpayers' money. I think the budget presentation helps to reflect some of the good things that we've done to help save money and some of the good things we've done in terms of maintaining our staff at an apparently consistent level over the last eight years. If you buy them as close as you can. It's hard for them to walk away and not appreciate the times that we're doing, not only educating students in this kind of, but the things we're doing to take care of the budget numbers. So, I do, I do really appreciate that, Dr. Jones and the staff, on a budget, budget presentation. No, it takes a hard job, I hope to do that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cole. Before I offer my comments, I'll just make one, I suppose, share with you one item in terms of formatting. I noticed as, as I was signing off on the documents that we have previously approved, there is, there is a, a name misspelled from one of the speakers during public comment on the February 11th minutes at the 7:00 PM time. I think that's a Scrivener's error. What I've asked Dr. Jones to do is have the name corrected. It's a, a letter or two have been left out. But if we are during the same meeting and if anybody has a concern procedurally, I'm happy to, having voted on the prevailing side, bring that item back in front of us and formally amend it. But again, I consider a Scrivener's error. There are two letters left out of the name. I can have him correct that and I will sign that item. If any board members have any concerns with that, please so indicate and I'm happy to make a motion and bring it back in front of us. Satisfied? Okay. I just, since this, since the individual came to public comment and I do recognize their name, I want it to be accurate and amended. All right, so thank you for that. The next item that I would have is just simply, I wanted to echo a couple of the comments and I'm going to do them very briefly, but I, I too appreciate the efforts have gone into developing our budget this year. I think that we have a, a good budget that we're moving forward. I appreciate the work of the staff and the leadership in bringing this to, to the point that we're at today. I appreciate the fact we're to balance budget right now in our discussions. We've got a lot of priorities that we've been able to address in what we're moving forward. And I, and I too appreciate the engagement of the staff and others who brought issues forward through our process of things that they have a need for or items that they would like the leadership to consider as that budget was developed. In, in addition, I do want to thank the other folks. I've had an occasion to be in the high school several times over the past few weeks. I appreciate the leadership there, appreciate the time and effort that goes into making that school run so successfully, the other schools as well. We've talked tonight about some issues that have been negative and we've needed to address them. But I would say that overwhelmingly, I get a lot, a lot of positive comment, a lot of very positive feedback from the community, from others about how effective and efficient our schools are run. And I don't want to just talk about the negative. I do want to take a minute to talk about the fact that we have wonderful staff that do a really good job. And there are occasions where we need to address issues and aren't working well. But likewise, when things are working well, you do need to take time to say that also. And I want to say that publicly that I appreciate the hard work of our staff, our administration, our leadership, particularly our teachers in making this school system so very successful. And the measure of that, we can choose a variety of ways to measure that, test performance, other things. But frankly, the smiles on the faces of our students, the performance, the satisfaction of our parents that we deal with. And if nothing else, folks, the full house we had tonight to provide recognitions and other things. It, it was just quite impressive to look at this place full of students being recognized for hard work, for achievements that happened because of the support of their parents, their own hard work, their parents, their family, their friends, and our staff and our teachers who worked very hard to give them a very positive educational experience. And I appreciate everybody that gets wrapped up into that process to make us so successful. So, thank you for that. Dr. Jones?
I think you said it well, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing else to add. Thank you.
All right. Well, that takes us to our final public comment period of the evening. In accordance with school board policies, BDDH and KD, any resident of Palatine County may address the board during public comment. At this time, citizens are invited to address the board. When it is your turn to speak, please come to the podium and wait to be recognized by the chair. Each individual will have one minute. Delegations will have five minutes to provide their comments. Please respect this time limitation so others may address the board. A maximum of 30 minutes will be designated for public comment period this evening. Please address your comments to the board as a whole, not to individual board members, the audience or staff. And please begin by stating your name. The board requests that all speakers maintain an environment that promotes listening and respect. The board will not respond or address issues raised by speakers during the course of public comment. And speakers are reminded that the board chair is authorized to stop or remove any speaker who uses vulgar, disruptive or threatening language. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines is greatly appreciated. Public comment period is open. Once again, public comment period is open. All right, seeing no movement, I'll bring our final public comment period of this meeting to a close. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion and a second. All in favor of adjournment, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. We are adjourned. Have a wonderful evening, folks.